Thanks, Matt. Sorry, I was...
Good afternoon. The workshop for December 17, 2019 is now in session. Pam, roll call, please.
Mrs. Belford?
Present.
Ms. MacDugald?
Present.
Ms. Campbell?
Present.
Ms. Neskovic?
Present.
And Mr. Susan?
Present.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The purpose of this workshop is to hear an update on our Head Start program. I will ask Jane Klein, Assistant Superintendent of Elementary Leading and Learning, to make the introductions. Ms. Klein?
Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to an update on Head Start. Sharing our information this morning is, this afternoon, is Dr. Wendy Smith.
Good afternoon, and welcome to our Head Start workshop. If you can just take a couple of seconds to review the vision and mission for Head Start, I would appreciate it. And today we will be focusing on an agenda that will support, not only supporting our students, but our parents in the wraparound service for our Head Start students. So our agenda today, we will be going over number one and two, ERSI and Governance, which you participated in a training on the SharePoint that was a PowerPoint, and so we'll be doing some review of that. And then also, our recent class or Classroom Assessment Scoring System review, and our focus area two review, which will be coming up this January 27th. So our first training that you participated in was ERSI. And basically, what is ERSI? Well, it's the eligibility, the recruitment, the selection, enrollment, and attendance of the pre-K students. You saw this chart in your training, however, it was blank, so we took the liberty to complete it with the leadership team so that we could review what was in the workshop or the PowerPoint, as well as what we can do to strengthen our program and how will we do it. So what we feel is working well in Brevard Public Schools Head Start is we are fully enrolled at 624 students. We also have many recruitment activities that include special events, enlisting our community partners, the policy council that we'll talk a little bit more in detail in a few minutes, door hangers, banners, word of mouth, all sorts of things to recruit our Head Start children to our program. And then we also provide homeless slots based on the community assessment and the changing needs of our community. Now, there's always room for improvement, so what can we do to strengthen ERSI? We believe that we can strengthen attendance by making sure that our kids are safe and checking on the well-being of them within the first hour of the program, which is actually a requirement of Head Start, if it's an unknown absence. So parents are able to say, hey, I'm going to take my child to the doctor tomorrow, we're going on a trip tomorrow, and we don't have to call. But if a child's not show up ages three and four, it is a requirement in the first hour to call home to check on the well-being of the child. Now, how will we do this? We are required to keep a call log. However, we have found that it may have not been done with fidelity, so Angie Dusset, Education Manager, as well as the instructional coaches, when they go in and visit the classrooms, we're checking the call log to make sure that that is happening, and...
Is that the responsibility of the individual teachers?
It can be the teacher or the instructional assistant in the classroom. Yes. So three-year-old, 17 students, if you have two absent, you're calling two parents within the first hour. Of only those parents who haven't let you know that the child's going to be absent.
Is there a requirement that they make contact with the parent? Like if they call home and no one answers, do they call the parent at work if there's a work number?
They make an effort, and they document how many times they call, and... You know, our teachers are usually pretty good about knowing, oh, they're going on a trip or whatever, but they have to make an effort, yes.
When you say "fully enrolled," can you explain what "fully enrolled" means? Is it, there's a percentage? How do we get to, I know, it says "fully enrolled," but...
624 students.
I got that.
Right.
How do we come up with 624 being fully enrolled?
Is that maximum?
Like, that's what I mean.
Right, because the three-year-old classes can hold 17 students, and the max for the four-year-old classes is 20.
Oh, so we have a maximum amount of kids per instructor?
Yes.
But we're not, there's a lot more kids out there in the community that we need to come into Head Start?
Absolutely, but right now, we can only take up to 624. We are required to have a waitlist because as soon as one child withdraws, that next person on the waitlist fills that slot.
Okay.
So there's a requirement to have a waitlist as well.
Perfect.
So how many are on the waitlist? Do we have a general number?
Check with my resident expert, Ms. Klein.
Approximately 200.
Oh, wow.
Wow. We're only funded for the 624.
Why?
Because that's what the federal grant was written for.
Also has to do with space.
Right.
You know, they're within our Brevard Public Schools, and we, right now, have one area called South Area Head Start that's in a building owned by Head Start, which services two classrooms.
One three and one four?
Two three-year-old classrooms.
How...
How do we have more kids go through?
How do we extend?
How do we tell the federal government we want more seats?
We have to find, we have to allocate more space within our school buildings.
Okay.
And the grant is a five-year grant, so...
What year are we on?
Year three of five.
If they can have classrooms in their own building, Head Start's different everywhere, right?
Sure.
So we do it through our schools and in our school building.
Right.
But why can't that be somewhere else, like their own building or another building?
Wouldn't be ours.
What?
It would not be our program.
If it's in another building, it's not our program.
The one building that they own, we...
We lease it.
We actually, we employ the people who work it, and we're responsible for that building. We handle that with all the safety procedures and everything else.
Security specialists?
Pardon?
Do we rent the building, or...
It's part of the grant relationship, but...
But doesn't limit the option, I mean, there's still BPK options for people.
Yes, BPK is...
It just doesn't incorporate all the extra wraparound parts that Head Start provides?
And you have to qualify for Head Start, and we'll talk about that in a few minutes, but you have to be 100% under the federal property line. So not all people who want to get into Head Start can because they don't meet the needs of the age of the children or the financial part.
Any extra space in garden? Jackie.
So getting back to what we can strengthen and how we will do it, the attendance, we're monitoring the call log with fidelity. Going on supports in Tier Two and Tier Three instructional practices, you might see a common theme about things that I'm going to talk about in Head Start that also transcend into actually the K-12 realm also. But we realize that we need the Tier Two and Tier Three instructional practices supports. So what we have done to provide that is we are educating the staff with ongoing training and support. Angie Dusset is in charge of the educational part of the Head Start program. We monitor goal data, we monitor teacher requests, what type of training they might want to have, and then her coaches will provide the training. They go in and model the training or the new procedure. They provide feedback to coaches, and that entails the whole coaching cycle. So we are on that with providing support. We also realize that support with these three-year-olds and four-year-olds might be in the need of some behavioral intervention plans, or BIPs, if you've heard them called. So we currently have a board-certified behavior analyst who is funded through Head Start, who deals with Head Start teachers, IAs, and the students, who will go in and help write the BIPs, who will help monitor the BIPs, who will help collect the data, and also model for them. As well as, we have our own ESE specialist who deals with any students in Head Start who have an IEP, and they might need help with writing the goals or providing the accommodations. So that goes with ERSI. Your second training consisted of program governance structure, and there are three parts to the program governance structure. The first part is the governing board, which is you. You, as the school board, have the legal and fiscal responsibility of Head Start. The policy council are elected representatives from each of the 13 Head Start sites, and they meet once a month with Ms. Barlow, and they are, they work kind of in tandem with you on the direction of the Head Start program, not meeting face-to-face, but through the board agenda items, through the notes, the board updates, and things such as that. Then there's the program management, which is the staff, is the operating of the day-to-day operations for Head Start. So just as we did for ERSI, the program governance chart was blank. What's working well with BP Head Start in the program governance is the governing body, again, which is you, and the policy council members are knowledgeable about their roles and responsibilities, as well as the parent committees provide input to the policy council members. So at each school site, the 13 sites, they have parent committees. They bring questions and concerns to the policy council member, who then in turns bring the questions and concerns to the policy council meetings once a month held at Clearlake. The policy council will then go back to their parent meetings, and there's discourse with them, and then we provide you with what the policy council brings to light. For instance, the policy council members brought to light, to Ms. Barlow beneath where the Head Start advocates, remember, they worked six and a half hours a day, nine months, and you approved them working eight hours a day for 10 months to help provide services to the families? That was brought about, actually, by the policy council members from their parents, saying, hey, we need more support, we need more help. They don't, they leave when my kids leave, or I can't get in contact with them, so that's just an example. What we can do to strengthen the program governance? We can increase member attendance at policy council meetings, that's what we always want to do. Actually, Ms. Barlow had a policy council meeting today. There was, out of 13, eight attended in a December meeting. Now, you've got to remember, they come from all over the county also to Clearlake. There is an alternate if they can't come, but that can still be strengthened. Of course, we'd like 13 out of 13 to come. So how do we increase this membership? Well, one idea we've had is to have a handout and a PowerPoint presentation that the Head Start advocates, the family advocates, can provide to parents when they're enrolling their children. Hey, we've got this great opportunity for you to get involved with the school system, and you can be on a policy council or a parent committee, so we have that information. And like I kind of alluded to before, we want to ensure all schools have representation, not only with a policy council member, but also an alternative or an alternate, and if anybody has to move or leave, we have an election as soon as possible to nominate someone else. Also new this year, being, coming from my principal role very recently, and not knowing all of these great things that happen in the Head Start world, I have initiated a quarterly principal newsletter to just highlight some of the things that the Head Start system provides as a wraparound service. I was negligent in knowing what kind of services they actually provided to the families, such as couponing classes, or help with their GED, or taking them to doctor's appointments. I just didn't know that as a principal, and so I started that.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Is it difficult to get parent involvement, or is it easy? I mean, how does that work?
I think it's probably as typical as it is in a school system, you have pockets of it that are, you know, are stronger than others. The family advocates will try to have meetings that are based on the best interest of the parent, whether it's during the school day, when they walk their child to school, after school, so we try to work around that.
Is there any incentive for a person to volunteer? I'm just asking the question because I don't know, because some of our schools really have...
That could be something we could look at, looking at to improve, some type of incentive.
There is a big incentive, actually. They, we get in-kind dollars for the parent volunteer hours, and so the parents are excited about needing to help out, being able to help us out in that way.
Thank you. But I like what you're thinking too about. We do feed them when they come to policy council.
I think transportation might be a problem with some of them.
Right.
With their having to go up to Clearlake from, say, the South Area.
Right. Good thought.
Are we picking these kids up on the bus, or are they brought?
They are eligible to ride the bus if it is on their IEP, correct?
If they live in the regular busing zone, rather than the barroom, which is the bus, the Head Start child can ride the bus.
So if they're within the two mile?
Yeah.
So after the training, we asked if there was going to be any questions, and we did actually receive some questions from board members, so I have them posted and am ready to answer those questions from the two trainings of the PowerPoints that you reviewed. Do we have an updated community assessment? And the answer is yes. The community assessment was conducted February 2018 by the NOLA Consulting Firm, and actually, the school board was made aware of the findings, as well as the policy council, and it is on the SharePoint site as well. It only happens once every five years, so it happened last February 2018. Another question, is our program considered center-based, or is it an approved locally-designed variation? It is center-based, and basically, that definition is children go to a center or a school to receive their education. Do we have early Head Start or just Head Start? Brevard Public Schools is a grantee for Head Start. Children's Home Society is the grantee for early Head Start that serves pregnant women through children up to age three. How do we recruit students? Well, this was a question that I hope was somewhat answered on that chart that we were talking about, but we recruit in many different ways, like setting up recruitment tables at community events, brochures, flyers, and the community partners are an asset with this help also. The Early Learning Coalition will help recruit students for us, Early Steps, Child Find, so we work with those agencies as well. Are there separate Head Start bylaws for board members, the governing body, or you? No. The board members follow the BPS bylaws. Is there a Head Start planning calendar, as referenced in the PowerPoint training? And yes, the calendar does exist in the Head Start policies and procedures. How do we look at our school readiness goals, and how do we measure these? These are measured three times a year through the goal assessment, and students are assessed, like I just said, three times per year. And then we actually, as a leadership team, review the data and make decisions with Angie Dusset, the Education Manager, on what kind of trainings that we might, can provide to teachers to increase their instructional practices. And you might be familiar with the word VAM, and so teachers' VAM scores do come from this gold data.
So we have teachers' VAM scores coming from Head Start teachers?
Yes.
Part of the pre-K.
Is the requirement for policy council communication with the governing board met by the information that we share with you? And yes, it is met by the monthly report, the self-assessment, the board updates, the board member input that you're giving, such as these questions, and the SharePoint postings. So moving on to the third and fourth items on our agenda, we have the class review and the FA2 review. Now, the class review just finished Friday. So it was a week-long review of the Classroom Assessment Scoring System, and we spoke briefly about this before, but it's the interaction between the teacher and the child. So observers go and observe how the interactions are in three domains. They are emotional support, classroom organization, and instructional support. So at the time of this PowerPoint, we hadn't completed our class review, so I'm going to remind you that we paid for an outside provider to come and do a class review in preparation for our federal class review, and that way, we were able to get some data points and remind our teachers of some of the things that are going well in the classroom and some of the things that the federal classroom observers will be looking for. So I think you're going to be very interested in finding the results because, again, they mirror the K through 12 good teaching practices. But our class review did happen, like I said, finished last Friday. 25 out of our 34 classrooms were visited. All 13 sites had at least one visit. They were two 20-minute observations, and we do not have the results yet because they will provide those at a later date after they compile all the data. So that was what I just spoke to. Now, we've shared this chart before, but I've updated it with the outside consulting group scores, and the emotional support, Brevard Head Start received an overall average, not individual teachers, but the average of a 5.82, where the Office of Head Start lowest 10% for the year 2018 was at 5.6641, with a benchmark score of 4. So what does all that mean? Well, we're above the 4, and we're also above the lowest 10%. Now, 2019, the Office of Head Start will also give us the lowest 10% once all class reviews are completed for 2019. Then our scores that were just completed will be compared to the scores that they will give us for the Office of Head Start lowest 10%, and hopes that we'll at least have these higher scores than the lowest 10%. Classroom organization for the outside consulting score was the 5.642, and the lowest 10% for last year. As you can see, we were higher with a benchmark score of 3 in classroom organization. And finally, instructional support, we were also, again, higher with a benchmark score of 2. Now, I remember the question of why was the benchmark score of instructional support so much lower, and I've done a little bit of research on that, talked to my professionals back there, Angie and Terry, and, you know, it does make sense that we're talking about three-year-olds and four-year-olds, and getting the emotional support first, then the classroom organization, in combination with the emotional support, then and only then can you provide quality instruction. Now, what I want to share with you is the results that the outside consulting group provided us in each of the three domains that Angie and her coaches were able to review and roll out to our teachers. This is where you will see a commonality between K through 12 classrooms as well. So in emotional support, these were the suggestions, or some accolades. Increase student choice throughout the day. Yes, even three-year-olds. Do you want to go to the puzzles first, or do you want to go to blocks first? Going to go to both, but which one would you like to go first? Teaching even the youngest three-year-old that they do have choices. Reduce teacher-directed interactions or activities and increase child-directed. That's kind of one in the same as we just said. Chat with students using their names, please and thank you. That's a big thing for class observers, to say, this is Klein, I appreciate you sitting so quietly, very quietly, very calmly, speaking and waiting your turn. Thank you for using your manners, calling the child by name and using those accolades and interactions. Use specific praise when you tell them why they did a good job. Again, not just good, I mean, that's just good teaching practice. That's correct. Or, yes, that's correct because, and so on. Smiles and laughter is a big thing. Sometimes they say, I know we're reviewers, just relax, have a good time with the kids when they're three and four, don't be nervous. Connect learning to the daily lives of children. I will give you an example of that in the recent class reviews that counted last week. A teacher was able to tell Ms. Dusset that a child had a tree stamp on their hand. They do a huge unit on trees, and so, wait till I blow you away with this. The student was talking to the teacher, Ms. Klein, I have an evergreen tree on my hand. The class observer went, really? Let me listen more. And the teacher said, yes, you do have an evergreen. Do you know the other kind of tree that I, that we talked about last week in school? No, I can't remember. Can you give me a hint? Four years old. Not just, tell me the answer. Can you give me a hint? Big points for interactions between a classroom observer. Yes, I can give you a hint, as the teacher is thinking, how can I do this? It rhymes with "mifidrus." Oh, it's "dissidrus." What? Classroom viewer went, what better words? Are you kidding me? So that was huge pluses. The teacher came out elated, going, oh, look what, I couldn't have planned this any better. But that proves that academic vocabulary was being used in the classroom. And also, the connecting learning to the daily lives of children. We want to talk about trees, not only in the classroom, but do you see trees on the way home? Maybe you can count trees on the way home. Do you have trees at your home? Some might not. Why don't you have a tree at your home? I don't have any, can we plant a tree? Can you take it in a cup? And so it's that interaction between, remember, three-year-olds, 17 of them if all are present, four-year-olds, 20 of them if they are all present. I don't have enough time with one at home. Haggardy is a phonemic awareness program that is used in the district even higher than pre-K students, and it is more rote, and so the classroom reviewers say, you know, with these three and four-year-olds, it doesn't have to be so direct and drill and rote, you can, you know, have some interactions in there. So that was some suggestions for emotional support. Some suggestions for classroom organization. Share clear learning objectives with the children. K-12, today we're going to be learning about trees and how they affect your life. What are we going to be learning about today? So training the students to have a purpose for their learning, even early as three-years-old. Join in the play to guide discovery. There's many, many centers in a pre-K classroom, and so class observers want to see the teacher and the instructional assistant, and sometimes even two instructional assistants, in their centers, talking and conversing and playing alongside, with teaching alongside them. Now, this next one, reduce student wait time. Often, we hear that teachers don't give enough wait time for students to respond. What they meant here with classroom organization, you better be ready when you change activities for 17, three-year-olds. If you were going to move towards a center that includes passing out baggies full of materials, it's in your best interest to be ready to have those baggies passed out very quickly. So that's what that means. Open-ended questions, making sure we're using higher-level questions, just like we want to do with a 12th grade senior. And brainstorm prior to the lesson. If your questions are planned, you're more apt to use them, and they're more intentional. So reminding teachers to do that. Have clear and consistent expectations. Kids have jobs. Remember being the door holder or the light monitor, or... Let them do that. Sometimes we get caught up so much in, we gotta get going, we gotta get done, it's all about the kids' learning, so we're encouraged to let even the three-year-olds and four-year-olds, let them have class jobs and help. And finally, this goes back to making sure you are ready. Have your materials ready, accessible, and interesting for three-year-olds or four-year-olds. Now, here comes that instructional support, which is a little bit harder to do with the three and four-year-olds, but what our goal is to ask how and why questions, and not what we call just right there questions, lower-level questions. Ask them how and why. They've got a brain, they can think, and they can explore, and they can take you on journeys that you will never imagine. Back-and-forth exchanges with follow-up questions, so they're, again, teaching the children how to have conversations with adults and also child to child. That's what we ask our students to do, is collaborate with children, trying to talk to your neighbor, and we can help promote that as early as the three and four-year-olds. Use advanced language, meaning use academic language, not that big tree that with prickly branches. Use the academic vocabulary, they'll blow you away. Develop depth and topics and durations in conversation. We don't want just the one question, the one answer from the child. We're trying to train them to have full conversations. Obviously, this is harder to develop if the classroom organization is not in place or if their emotional needs aren't being taken care of. And then finally, we do have a creative curriculum, which assists us in the instructional which assists us in the instructional supports. Hence the tree unit, we have a ball unit, all sorts of fun things. So now that it was classed, we'll move on to the Focus Area Two review. The purpose is pretty much just, what is our management system? And what are the key, who are the key staff who participate in the data collection? And they will be touring with our reviewers. Again, that will start January, the week of January 27. The FAT review is divided into six sections, and you see them listed up there on the overhead or the screen. The two that the governing body will be responsible for answering questions about. The first one is program management. And basically, you will, the governing body will demonstrate how they adopt practices that ensure the informed governance of the program. And that's what we are doing right here, providing you information about the requirements. Using data to oversee services for children's and families. We will share with you the class data when it comes out. We will share with you the FAT data when it comes out. We will share with you goal data when it comes out. So we can, all in the goal of having the children be school-ready. And then you will also oversee the entire grant under program management. This last section out of the six is the fiscal responsibility. And your responsibility as a governing board is also to oversee the funding source of the grant, the fund distribution. When we came to you and asked if we could increase the family advocates to eight hours, it cost money. So that was part of that, and your approval. Your approval of the operating budget, and how the governing body is trained and supported in the decision-making progress or process. And that's a lot of the updates that we provide for you in lieu of how busy you are and your time. We want to make sure you're informed, but then respect your time. Before I end, I want to make sure that there are no other questions about, Ms. Belford gave me some questions, and I provided answers through Mrs. Klein about the PIR, or the Program Information Report, and how all of, does that data get there? Would you let me review the answers to those three questions? Or did the email satisfy that?
Yeah, I was good with the email. I don't know if the other board members had a chance to look at it. They were just...
Tons and tons and tons and tons and tons of data is in the system. Which generates the PIR. The question that I appreciated was, do parents have to provide some of this data in the initial eligibility meeting? And yes, because there are two requirements to get into the Head Start program, age and salary. So yes, they do have to do that. And then, once they get in, things like health screenings, immunizations, family goal-setting, social services, student screening, staff qualifications is all uploaded and kept in the database for that.
And those are things, like the screenings, these are things we're bringing to them, not, oh, here, you have access, you can go do it. But those are actually coming in to, like the dental...
Some, so, well, actually, they get on a school bus. And they do go to a dentist.
But we're taking, we're taking it.
Right, right. Free of charge, parent permission. Yes, yes.
And those dentists and those organizations are being funded through the form of care act? I think when they perform those dentist procedures.
With the pediatrics, is that how they, I'm not sure how they are...
There was a series of mobile dentists on the West Coast that were going to schools, and they would perform all of it right at the school. Their funding source was that or this.
Okay, that one, when I was principal at Cambridge, they came in for, I believe, second graders and put steel on their teeth. And they went to the school. This is when we load them up, all of those Head Start children in a school bus, and they sit in a dentist's office and get an initial screening, x-rays, cleaning, and trying to educate not only them, but their parents on the importance of...
Brushing your teeth.
And even baby teeth. That's a barrier, because they're going to lose their baby teeth anyway. But it's sometimes.
Did you ever go on that bus? Like, that must be the craziest situation to go on a bus.
We're going to let you talk.
No, I have some stuff I was going to talk about in a second, just recently.
Right. It's not safe, there aren't cameras on the bus.
It's just, it's fascinating. Okay, thank you.
Right.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Yes, ma'am.
I was looking at, I was curious, I was looking at what's on the agenda. And how do you handle an updating immunizations? Because I saw by the end of the year, there were only 206 that were fully updated. So how do you handle that? I mean, I think that's got to be a little tricky. Because do we, I know we take them for dental care. Do we help them get to the health department, or wherever?
The family advocates work with families about that. Some is age, so if there's a transportation issue, absolutely. If there is a Medicaid issue, the family advocates will step in and provide assistance. And that's what that wraparound service is defined as.
So they would help with the preventive healthcare then too? Besides just the advocates help with that too?
Well, before they come to school, they have to have a physical.
Like a physical? Okay.
Is, do we have, in all our data that we have, do we have data tracking them into the future so we can look back and see, say, our kindergarten person, second graders, how they're doing, the ones who have went through Head Start compared to the ones who didn't have any kind of preschool, or compared to, you know, students who've gone through the BPK? Do we carry that forward at all?
Yes, so you will receive, that comes in, the BPK, Dr. Beth Mills does that update, should track where they are in pre-K and then third grade assessment. So you'll get, you get that once a year, usually.
But it'll, will it kind of show how, especially for this, I'd like to see how the students who went through Head Start compared to the ones who didn't have any kind of preschool, you know?
Right, does Head Start do that at all, or do they end at?
We haven't done that.
One of the issues you might have is the comparative analysis to the individuals that you're actually tracking, right? So like, if you're looking at the Head Start kids and comparing them to another subset that may be the same, wouldn't that be difficult to do? Because your socioeconomic grades are a little bit different than maybe averages are.
We track it based on who has had a preschool BPK program to not.
And this would, this would qualify as as one?
Absolutely.
So I was in a Head Start program last week. And like, my son is three-years-old, and it is, multiply him by seventeen, and it is crazy. I was, my wife told me that when we did substitutes, that I should go in and sub in an elementary school, and there's no way. There's just no way, because those kids are...
Elementary, that's the best.
No, I saw it in kindergarten class in Denver, if you recall.
Oh, yeah, he was trouble.
He jumped on the middle of the floor, and the kids climbed all over him, and like jungle gym.
We were learning that.
We were trying to learn.
It was so...
We were learning.
Yeah, I got a call about that day, saying...
In order to get those kids to achieve, you've got to take them right on that edge, and then ride. Asshole, 2000, the kids went through my classes. But listen, what I did want to just say, what you guys do is absolutely amazing. Like, what that teacher was dealing with, when you talked about where the individual, you give them their choices. There was one kid that was just kind of like, she had four kids in front, and they were going through counting, right? And with the blocks, they had blocks, and they were telling what numbers they were. And this kid was walking around, and he was trying to disrupt the group. And she just turned to him and said, would you like to work with your, and I forget what it was, maybe puzzle, which was the numbers? And he was like, yeah. And he was quiet, went right over here, and he started working. So literally multitasking, controlling the group that she had. I mean, it was amazing. So I wanted to say thank you to that. And then I wanted to ask, what restrictions? Like, when you are looking at capacity, it's, expansion of programs is based on capacity. Because funding just sources how many kids we have. Is that how the grant works? Is there like a FTE-type situation? When we are funded by this, are we funded by an FTE unit? How does it work? Like, so many dollars per kid?
Right, being new to, I've never written the grant. I've been in this position a year, so I'm going to...
Ms. Barlow.
Ms. Barlow. The grant is determined based on the community assessment. And this particular grant has been funded in enrollment of 624, even before public schools was the grantee.
Okay, so there's no... And then, do you have, just like we have in a lot of our schools, at each school, are they, are there, do you have business partners, community people that are working with these kids? Because this is one of our tight, I think would be a great place for some of these people who want to try to give. Are you, do you have that tie-in? Or is it just school-based?
Right, so as a principal of Cambridge, yes. I have volunteers in the Head Start classrooms. The fire department visited with the fire engine coming. We did field trips onsite, and so, yes.
Okay, and then you answered the data comparison, so thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Are Head Start teachers all certified teachers?
Yes.
With degrees?
Requirement. Yes.
But you can't, they can't get loaned for goodness if they're in Title I school. They can't get rest and practice. I mean, I'm so fired up. Anyways.
Do we have, I know we have different kinds of preschool, but all of our Head Start classrooms are only, like, it's only Head Start. We don't have any of the, I can't remember what they call it, when there's like...
Blended?
Yes, blended.
Just Head Start?
Just Head Start, okay.
But a school might have Head Start in a blended class.
And a BPK.
Right.